All right. 9:00 AM. This is Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We're here today for Council Bill 23-0381, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2024. First session today is going to be the Capitol Budget. Mayor Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joined to my left by Council President Nick Mosby, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilwoman Dani McCray, 2nd District, and to my right, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We also have representatives from Council President Nick Mosby and Mayor Brandon Scott's offices. Again, we're here today for Capitol Budget. Director Ryer, I will turn it over to you for a presentation.
Thank you.
Just as a reminder, for those of you who have not used the new technology in here, there's two buttons. You want to push the button on your right. If you see my red light up here? Turns on. Just press the button on and off. When it's red, that means your microphone is on and you can speak. Ask that you please turn your microphone off once you've finished speaking. These microphones are pretty sensitive and catch a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. My name's Chris Ryer, Director of Department of Planning. I'd like to introduce my team. On my left is Stephanie Smith, Assistant Director, and Nicole Stewart, Assistant Director. On my right, Sarah Parnellum, Kristen Ahern, and John Lloyd. Now, I got to figure this out, though. I'm going to try to go quickly through this. I know you'll have questions. This is about 70 slides here. Nothing new in this.
You said 70?
70. So I will be very quick.
What do you think's a reasonable amount of time to be able to get through that?
We were given 20 minutes.
20 minutes works. Thank you.
Yep. So I'm just going to have to pull this. So I think you know the process. Department of Finance manages the overall operating budget. The role of the Planning Department is just the Capitol Budget by city charter. The Planning Commission must submit a recommendation to the Board of Estimates. The budget year goes into the operating. I mean, the first year, the Capitol Budget goes into the operating budget, and then it starts all over again. Definition of Capitol Budget is basically improvements at over at least $50,000. They don't inquire, usually include vehicular equipment or smaller maintenance types of repairs. Here's an example of projects. We're going to go through this length. The process is important to know that it starts in September. The Planning Department does not originate a Capitol request. The agencies originate them. So if a citizen or our councilperson is interested in a Capitol project, they should approach the agency responsible for implementing the Capitol project before, on or before September of the annual cycle. In around Thanksgiving, the end of November, the agency submit everything to the Planning Department. We then spend a month or two trying to fit the needs of the city into the supply of the Capitol Budget. And then in January, February, we began an extensive public hearing process. Every agency makes a presentation to the Planning Commission outlining their needs, their strategies, their priorities. In March, the Planning Commission finally votes on the Capitol Budget, sends it to Board of Finance, Board of Estimates, and then to you all, like this slide, because it really shows the challenge of taking what I'll show you is like over a billion dollars' worth of needs and funneling them down to about $100 million a year. I know there's always interest in the criteria. It didn't change this year, but I wanted to run over it again. Again, the base criteria is legally required. But we also look at equity, health and safety, the asset's condition, the ROI, environmental impacts, and efficiency and effectiveness. We also have a few other. There are always urgent needs. There are always projects that maintain critical services. Alignment with plans could be a community-based plan, for example, on the administration's priorities, or, this was a big thing this year, the availability of alternative funding sources. If there's another source and we can relieve the pressure on the Capitol Budget, we will take that. This one is really one I want to point out to you because we use the phrase "a state of good repair," maintaining to a state of good repair. On the center column, you see our liabilities in terms of state of good repair. 7.9, almost $8 billion. On the, I mean, yeah. I think I missed a zero. And on the right is what that translates to annually. So we're, keep those numbers in mind while we go to what the actual budget looks like. Now, I'm going to shift gears. I want to give an example of deferred maintenance in the city. So I just gave you an idea of how much deferred maintenance we are looking at. Department of General Services does a particularly good job in evaluating the condition of our real estate portfolio. And this slide, this slide shows one of their tools for doing that. The FCI score, the Facility Condition Index, is the ratio of all deferred maintenance to the current replacement value. This is a national tool. I want to show you where Baltimore City sits in terms of its real estate portfolio. So our portfolio is in such bad repair that it approaches the state of needing complete replacement. So instead of being able to repair, we would have to replace. The average municipal building is not good nationwide, I will point out, but ours is This slide, very hard to read, but it shows you what it would cost Department of General Services to maintain what we have now, would have to double their annual budget to $100 million a year. But going the way we are now, we are not going to come even close to that. And to get it, the top line is to get it in a state of good repair. This slide is easier to read. So this shows us what, the orange, the orange line is our annual capital need. It relates to about 5 million square feet of real estate. The blue line is our average Capitol Budget. It supports about 1.5 million square feet. So this really shows the split between what we have and what we can afford to maintain. So I think that's very relevant because the Department of General Services and the This slide is important because we can't spend our way out of this program, this problem. So we have to figure out a way to downsize our real estate portfolio. And a couple things have given us an opportunity in the past couple of years. Because of the pandemic, many of the office agencies have switched to work-for-home. And as you know, nationally, there's a, there's a much bigger trend towards shared workspace than individual workspaces. So changing the paradigm here is a possibility. We could, we could convert agencies to coworking, and we could implement some longer-term form of teleworking that would allow us to downsize the portfolio to something we could afford. Next section. This just gives you the trends. Sometimes there's some misunderstandings around this. This gives you the fund sources, hard to read on here, in order of the bar graph. You'll see, for example, at the bottom, the red is the city revenue, city revenue bonds, and the next level, it's very hard to read, are general funds. This year, I believe, we received about $15 million in general funds, but other years, they were higher. General funds, when there is a surplus, as there was during COVID, it seems to be good fiscal management to shift that into Capitol because it's a one-time, it's a one-time revenue source that goes into, into a Capitol Fund. We did not have that opportunity this year, as you know. This is a pie chart of the fund sources, but the thing I want to point out here is really three-quarters of the budget is fixed, driven by utility funds. The revenue loans, utility funds, and county grants all refer to water and wastewater. The discretionary sections are much smaller. Those are federal and state funds, city bond funds, which are the most precious money of all because we completely control that. So we use it very carefully to backfill when no other, no other source will pay for something. General funds are the same way, but typically much smaller. And then finally, there is a type of general fund called highway user revenue. Most of that goes to the operating budget, but it can also go to the, also go to the Capitol Budget. I want to note that, that there were $40 million worth of recovery funds allocated to this Capitol Budget. It is not all the recovery funds in the Capitol Budget, but it is all the recovery funds in the FY '24 Capitol Budget. Want to talk about how those were distributed? Here we go. This is really hard to read. I don't have it. Here, we're showing, again, in FY '24, how the $40 million of ARPA funds were distributed. You can, I don't have to read it all. The largest source, the largest chunk went to the Department of Transportation to relieve our backlog in ADA retrofits for our, for our streets and sidewalks. Other chunks went to street resurfacing, again, like ADA. That is something that you could, the Department of Transportation can do quickly. It's not a bridge project, which takes a decade to, to fund and build. ADA and resurfacing is our relatively quick projects. We also worked on HVAC projects. You all know the problems a lot that the Pratt had. Those are relatively quick fixes. They're important sources for cooling, for seniors and things like that in the summertime. And we also did put almost $10 million towards the backlog and building improvements that Again, this is the, this is the fund sources for the funds we really have discretion, discretion over. I want to note the very small orange band there. That's the general revenue fund. As compared to last year, when we had $77 million worth of, worth of general funds, we had very little this year, and that is going to be reflected in the Capitol Budget. Next slide. You all probably know this one. We go to the voters every, every two years, and they allocate a pot of money. These are the four pots of money. Two of them are fixed. The, the Affordable Housing Loan is fixed by an MOU between the City of Baltimore and a group of advocates, and the school loan amount is fixed by negotiations over the 21st Century. So the balance in this, the balancing act, is really between the Community Economic Loan Program, or POT, and the Public Infrastructure POT. All right, now. So now we're going to talk about the agencies. As I said in the beginning, the agencies between September and November put together their Capitol Budget. Then it comes to planning in December, January, and we're trying to make it fit to what is available. There really isn't tremendous, there's no relationship between the overall capital needs of the city and the size of the Capitol Budget. It's really about what we can afford. So here, this year, these were the, this is a summary of the recommendations by agency. All right, so the total general fund-backed sources is 127 million. That's really the discretionary part of the Capitol Budget. Although if you looked at all the sources, it's much larger than that. Again, the bulk is utility, utility funds. Speaking of those, we'll talk about them for a minute. Let me skip this slide. Well, utility funds are typically water, wastewater, and stormwater. And here's the breakdown of those three. This is their fund source, revenue loans, utility pay-go, county grants, because a lot of the system goes out into the county and state funds. Now, I'm going to switch to transportation. This is how we broke down the transportation Capitol Budget into, into types of work. The estimated deferred maintenance total is 1.3 billion now, or roughly 158 million per year over the next 20 years. You've heard me say this before, but I want to emphasize it. Until 2009, I think, we were spending about $158 million, plus or minus, a year in the Capitol Budget of the Department of Transportation. But during the Great Recession, that was greatly reduced, and we have never really gotten it back. We do have a bump coming this year, next year, and the following year from the General Assembly, but that's not a permanent bump. So I will say that at one point, our Capitol Budget could keep up with the deferred maintenance of the city, but it does not now. How are we spending the dollars we have? Bike and pedestrian improvements. Again, the focus is on ADA because of a variety of reasons, including the threat of a lawsuit. We're playing catch-up on our ADA issues. We did, as I mentioned earlier, put some recovery funds towards this. That's a big chunk of it. The beauty of this project, it is something you can accomplish in two or three years. Fund sources, general obligation bonds, the highway user revenues, only $34 million. Federal funds are federal highway funds. We have to match with 20%. Stephanie tells me I have to hurry. Department of Housing, Community Development, this gives you a breakdown by pot of money, affordable housing, home repairs, demos, stabilization, our impact investment areas. And again, many of our major housing, community development projects are held up by infrastructure issues. We don't have the money in Park Heights and Uplands and Chum for the infrastructure going on with the, with the housing project. Breaks it down. We've got our General Services. All right, we've talked a little bit about this, but I just want to emphasize the mismatch between the size of the portfolio DGS has to maintain and the amount of available capital. We've been working hard over the last couple of years to, to figure that out. Many of you know the, the housing typology gives some reference point on real estate values, so it makes sense to try to sell properties in high-value areas and invest in low-value areas. That's what we're looking at. We also know that the most important real estate of all is the service delivery to the citizen, like at the point of the, of the neighborhood, so we prioritize that. There's a lot in this Capitol Budget with libraries, police, fire, kinds of facilities. But we're, again, we're going to take a hard look at the downtown campus and see if there's something we can do there to relieve the burden on, on their, on their Capitol Budget. This gives a breakdown of the, of the types of facilities in this Capitol Budget. Again, the fund source and Wreckin' Park. Recreation and Parks, you know, is a big department. It's one of the biggest per capita in the nation. 52 rec centers, hundreds of parks, acres of parkland, miles of trails, courts, many courts, 23 pools. I'll go on and on. Amount's completely quit. All right. I'll break it down for you. The FY '24 for Wreckin' Park is $26.5 million. 15 goes to park improvements, five to rec centers, five and a half to courts and fields, a quarter million to pools, five to trails, and five to other. Again, this does not reflect the ARPA funding of previous years. So there is, there is a big chunk of recovery funds from a previous budget year that is not reflected in this year's Capitol Budget. Seems to have a delay. Is that what you wanted, President? Oh, this is the break, that was the breakdown. So this is the breakdown in FY '24. All right, let's go to one more. This is important. This Department of Solid Waste. So the Bureau, Bureau of Solid Waste, the Bureau of Solid Waste is the only part of DPW that's funded by general funds. Everything else is by, is by the utility funds. So it's very vulnerable to the vagrances of the Capitol Budget. And as you know, they had a hard time during COVID. 50% of their workforce was out at one point. And they also are under a long-term pressure to close down the incinerator. They need to expand the landfill and shift to a strategy of reducing waste rather than burning or landfilling it. So these are some of the potential costs they have. A rail transfer station, when the, when the landfill is full, which will be in our lifetime, the only other option will be to ship it out of state, and the most efficient way to do that is by rail. My truck is incredibly expensive. We do have a plan to expand the landfill, but that will not buy us that much time, only 15 years. I know Director Mitchell, when he came to Baltimore, told me that the City of Oakland had landfill capacity for 150 years, and here we only have 15 years on our landfill capacity. Compost facility, well, transfer stations make all this work. Compost facility, food waste is the largest single component of solid waste. If we can reduce that, then we don't have to ship it somewhere. Other, other MRFs, other material like construction debris are also big components of our solid waste. This is where we are, budget year. We're about $10 million. I believe almost half of that is in a state grant for the compost facility. We're starting to set aside, we have been setting aside money for the landfill for many years. We're starting to set aside money for a composting facility and transfer stations to make this sort of really big reorganization work down the road. So the breakdown here was $4 million in state funds and only six and a half in, in general obligation bonds. Got one more. Schools. The school system is on an entirely different schedule from us. 21st Century program is separate from this Capitol Budget. We contribute about $19 million a year to the school system. That triggers about $35 million from the state, so we're talking a neighborhood of $50, $55 million a year. Point of comparison, I think Baltimore County's is $150 million a year. Montgomery County's is $400 million a year. We do our best. It's, it's a fourth, maybe a fifth of our Capitol Budget, but is woefully inadequate. School system uses it to invest in non-21st century schools, primarily in systems. I don't know the exact numbers, but I think there are only two schools left without air conditioning now, for example. That's been a push for the past few years. So they use it to infill smaller Capitol projects, not major rehab. They do, they do manage with, with our money and the, and the state money to rehab a school completely every maybe three or four years. So there's a long line for that, and that's a different presentation, but we can provide that if you need it. Then finally, a very small account, mayoralty and, and planning is a cultural account. I think about $2 million of it is state funds. I can't remember what they go for. And that, I believe, libraries. We pulled out libraries this year. There's a big investment going in them, particularly in HVAC. We're also proud, very proud that we finally fully funded the park, the new Park Heights Library. That was a big accomplishment. I believe Brown will actually break on, on that this year. But it is part of the DGS portfolio. They manage the library projects. Libraries also raise substantial amount of money on their own. Finally, BDC and BSIT. BDC has very small Capitol Budget. They've been putting it into business support programs, corridor projects. They sometimes act as a pass-through for other nonprofits. And BSIT, pretty hard to explain. They provide this handy airport analogy with, with gates and hubs, and the planes are the applications. It kind of gives you an idea of how they work, but it really, I'm not sure I really fully understand it. BSIT also walks a fine line between a capital and operating fund. Many of their, many of their, I can't use the word application. Many of their uses of money are not of a long-term the word application, many of their uses of money are not of a long-term nature. Some are, but many are not. So we typically fund the BSIT part of the portfolio with general funds, not, we don't borrow money for for BSIT projects. So that's the end of my presentation. Plenty of time for questions. Done.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, Sixth District Member of the Committee, Councilman Chris Burnett, Eighth District Member of the Committee, and Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Fourteenth District. And we have Deputy CAO Simone Johnson here as well. We'll now jump into questions. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Ryer, I guess the the first question is, has planning had an opportunity to come up with a solution to really do the evaluation and criteria of of equity versus equality? You know, this is a discussion that we've been having for for quite some time, and just wondering what you guys have been able to do to date.
Yes, I have a couple of slides, but it's very preliminary. We won't finish this analysis probably till June.
So you came prepared.
Yeah. Now, I don't know how to enlarge this, but this will show you.
She can read if you could enlarge that.
I have, I have a map or some maps, and I have some bar charts. Here, this map. So you may remember, we found, I think, the second or third year we did that there was a big disconnect between the between the DPW capital budget and the rest of the capital budget. The DPW capital budget seemed to be all over the place, and to include it in our equity analysis seemed to really kind of twist the results in a way that was not accurate or helpful. So since that point, we have, we have separated them out, and we think the map that does not include DPW is a much better measurement than the map that does include DPW. So this breaks it down by neighborhood, and I didn't bring former years with me today, but this gives you an idea of where we think we're going this year. The map on the right is DPW. Next chart is.
So I guess when we talk about equity here, like, what are the variables that flow into coming up with that temperature chart?
So we use the urban sustainability director's lens. That's something that the department has used since the very beginning. Four components of that are structural, procedural, distributional, and transgenerational. And the capital budget is a unique illustration of a transgenerational equity analysis, because we are, with with anything funded by debt, we are asking our children to pay for something that we're doing today. Conversely, if we don't invest in the capital budget, then our children are paying for something we didn't do today. So I did want to highlight that aspect. That's pretty unique, I think, to the capital budget.
I think that's the most important aspect, and I think the approach that we're taking, again, is equality solution as opposed to equity solution, because the same way we're looking at the transgenerational impacts of the decisions we're making today and how it's going to affect Baltimore in ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now, is the things that weren't done in the past. And in order for us to constantly utilize this term equity, we have to evaluate what was done in the past to make the determination of what we do today. So I just want to be very clear, and we've had this discussion over and over and over again, particularly from a planning perspective, you guys literally sit at the core of the institution that has created these policies to drive the inequities that we see today, that this is not looking at it from an equity lens. This is looking at it from an equality lens. And we've, we've talked about this, right? So I don't want to, I just think it's important that we, and I just want the administration to to really understand and embrace that. And if we're not looking at it based off of equity, which is fine, I mean, it's clearly not kind of my prerogative or or not my my position I think we should be in, but we should just say it for what it is. And from a transgenerational perspective, we're looking at solely on equality, not equity.
Well, I think you can use these charts, for example. This shows effort, I guess, by race and income. It doesn't give you any guardrails. It doesn't tell you what you should be doing. It tells you what you are doing. And it certainly doesn't try, how do you quantify the past? Like, we haven't figured that out. How do we quantify the past and then use that to address the present and future?
And that's why we have to stop using the term equity. You know, so the per capita DPW allocations, percent of residents, right? And this goes by race, right? So the reality is, in the fiscal year that you guys are evaluating, which is eighteen through twenty-four, the impacts of today was created by what took place yesterday. That's why, when you look at it and you say what your valuation is from a capital perspective, one of your main pillars is transgenerational lens, because you want to ensure that in the future, that from an equity perspective, you're trying to get the biggest bang for the buck for, again, twenty-five, thirty, forty years out. But when we talk about true true capital allocation today, when we talk about the projects that you guys are evaluating, the way you're doing it, we're not doing it from an equity perspective. And, you know, this is something I've constantly talked about, and I think it's really important, particularly from the, again, the planning department, which sit at the core of how these policies, these issues have been created from decades and decades and decades of disinvestment, disproportionate amount of disinvestment in certain communities, that we understand and we embrace that as a city. And we stopped using the term equity, you know, from a performative measure, and we use it as a, if we're going to use it, we really use it as a verb.
Thank you for that. It's a, it's a fascinating discussion. I do know, I've done some reading in California. There's a, there's a lot more, they're a lot more advanced in their calculations, I think, than we are. I've often thought of the, let's pick Edmiston Village, for example. An investment in Edmiston Village in the thirties was an investment in an all-white, brand-new neighborhood, whereas an investment in Edmiston Village in the nineties was a completely different. So it's really interesting to think of how an investment at this point in time in one geography is different in the same geography, but in a different point in time.
That, that's why I think when we talk about particularly capital improvement, it's not about investment. It's more about disinvestment and disproportionate amount of disinvestment. So as neighborhoods like Edmiston Village, as those demographics shifted, dollars shifted as well with it, right? So, and it's not because, you know, we had less of resources or proportionally, the resources that we decided to use were significantly less in proportion to other areas that grew in population as relates to other demographics. So I think that that is the true equation. It's not looking at Edmiston Village as a snapshot, you know, sixty, seventy years ago, when it was a certain demographic versus where it is today. And the investment, again, is really about the disproportionate amount of disinvestment that we see in certain communities.
May I speak? Thank you so much. I just wanted to add something. I think we're all in agreement with the Council President on what you're talking about. These, these bar charts and maps, they really show where we are today, and what we're trying to do is not exacerbate that disinvestment, disinvestment pattern moving forward. So I just want to make sure you know we are hearing you, and we look at this information as a way to not double down on that inequity of the past.
And I appreciate that, and that's why I think that, you know, these charts, this evaluation is great, but let's call it equality. Let's not call it equity, because those two words have vastly different meanings. And that takes a lot of work and effort, to the director's point, to to do some of the things that other municipalities and states have done to really drive towards an equity lens. That's not what we're doing. That's not what the planning department has done to date. And we've talked about this several times, so don't want to continue to be the dead horse, but every time you come in front of me and we start talking about equity, I'm really interested in understanding and knowing the breakdown of the variables you're utilizing to try to drive equity. And anything that I've heard to date just doesn't show equity, it shows equality. I'm going to switch gears real quick and just talk about the federal infrastructure investment and jobs act funding. The quick question I have is, when we talk about, like, the American Rescue Plan money, and we talk about the infrastructure money, has there been like a planning evaluation to ensure that we're not overlapping? Obviously, the infrastructure dollars is a much narrower kind of focus. You can only use this for specific disciplines, whereas ARPA is much more liberal as it relates to the restrictions. The concern I have is, has there been evaluation of things that we're paying for for ARPA that we really should be focused on paying for inside of the infrastructure dollars to maximize the amount? Is planning part of that discussion at all?
Christian, you want to answer that?
Yep, I, I wanted to caution that the the infrastructure investment dollars, we are budgeting additional formula dollars for the Department of Transportation, but my understanding, the vast majority of that money coming through the Infrastructure Investment Act is through competitive grants, so it's going to be for very specific projects that we go out and apply for competitively. And and generally, the ARPA dollars have not been for those types of things. So you'll see it in the fiscal twenty-four capital budget. The compost facility, we've budgeted four million federal as a result of a program through the Infrastructure Act. About twelve million additional federal dollars for transportation, plus of maybe two or three million more for competitive grant programs through transportation. So we have a sense at this point where those competitive programs are going to be, and the ARPA dollars were not recommended for for those items.
Understood. So, so we, we knew what our priorities were, but we also understood that it was going to be a competitive process, and we weren't necessarily going to be allocated whatever amount we needed for those. So the things that stood stood up on our priority list, we went after them with ARPA dollars, and then we also developed programs around maybe some things that overlap for the infrastructure dollars.
Yep, and I will say that the the ARPA investments that we were able to recommend with the forty million that we talked about at the beginning of our presentation, they are for items with with a much bigger need. So if there are additional infrastructure dollars available as well, that can only help. So I think about fifteen million of the ARPA dollars that we recommended using to supplement the capital budget this year was for ADA, but we know that any additional federal dollars we can get for that will, you know, help us go even further.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've also been joined by Councilman Ryan Dorsey, Third District Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Porter, and then Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I want, I had a question related to the compost facility. So we're supposed to be doing phase one within the next two years. Where are we in that process, and how is the current funding model that you all have implemented with the ten million dollars that we have planned? How does that go into, where are we in that phase of development?
I think I'll let Christian try that.
Thank you.
Yep, and I'd want to defer to DPW for a more detailed answer. We have five million budgeted in the fiscal twenty-four capital budget, a million in local funds, and four million in federal funds contingent on getting that federal grant.
Yes.
Right now, they're in sort of design and planning phase, but that would be enough to at least start, you know, I think it's sort of a, the type of facility that can be expanded over time, so we would be able to do sort of the first tranche and and start composting.
And forgive me, I should have clarified my question. It was more of a, where are we in the overall revenue, not revenue, but generating cost, because I believe it's like twenty-three million dollars? And where are we in the next two years? We're not even going to hit that twenty-three million dollar mark with the current funding model that you have now?
I'm sorry, I missed part of your question.
No worries. So if it takes twenty-three million dollars for the phase one of the composting facility, we currently have ten million dollars that we've already allocated. How far are we, I mean, I know, how far are we away to phase one? Because next year, if we do it, we're still not going to hit that twenty-three million dollar mark needed for the phase one of the composting facility.
So the composting facility specifically, I don't believe the total cost is twenty-three million. I think they can do, it's sort of like, I think of it as like, they have this wind, windrow or whatever. They can do something with the money that they have. If they get that federal grant, they will start composting with that money. They don't have to wait until they get twenty-three million. I, I think the transfer station plus.
That's, that's what I'm specifically asking about, yes.
That is still in the planning and design phase, yes. There is, my understanding is that that is not fully funded yet.
And what's the total cost of that facility?
I have to defer to DPW on that.
Okay.
I think they're doing environmental studies now on the site, on the preferred site. If the studies come back and and show that we can indeed build on that site, that will be the preferred site. But I don't think that they can get a full, a true cost until they understand what's going on underneath the surface and what type of engineering they're going to need to build the facility.
Thank you. I appreciate that response. My concern is that we are year three within the better, less waste, better Baltimore plan, and we currently don't have any, from from this conversation, we currently don't have any funding model to produce that phase one of the facility. And, oh, sorry, sir. We currently have no, thank you, we currently have no plan or total cost even thought about within our capital improvement for this phase one of the facility. And if we're kind of to move and make sure all of our strategic plans are aligned, we're three years behind. And so that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I would, I'll refer you to Bureau of Solid Waste, but I think you're correct that we don't really have that plan figured out in time and space, and we don't have it figured out in the capital budget.
Okay.
I would say that's the one agency that can't tell you exactly what they need. Every other agency can tell you what they need, and they can tell you the gap between what they have to work with and what they have to do for their job. Solid Waste isn't quite there yet.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Director Ryer. I think that speaks to a larger issue about the functionality and the feasibility of the plans that we are putting out to community. We're asking them to engage with these plans, just making sure that it's feasible. We have economic modeling to support the plans that we put out there, because the community is holding us to a standard to get these plans done, based on what they've worked with agencies with. So I just want to put that out there as well. With regard, I have another question with regard to the new regional water infrastructure task force. How do these capital funds kind of flow into that?
I can't answer that. Christian, can you?
I believe that the task force is set up right now to do a study, and Assistant Director Smith can weigh in. But so it's not affecting the dollars in the capital budget yet.
Yeah, it's, it's not that far. So the work product of the task force is by January to basically give some guidance on around, around how to just reimagine the governance between the county and the city. So it really, it's at a very infant stage. They haven't even appointed people to this task force.
Yeah, and so the only reason why I ask that is because most of the, our biggest asset within the city of Baltimore, or one of our biggest assets, is our wastewater system. There are people that are tax-paying dollars that are paying into this system, and so I want to make sure that we have some sort of kind of foreshadowing when we're doing the study about how the funds that have already been expended on our wastewater system are flowing into this study of regional wastewater management.
I think it's really good that you're on the record, talking about it now, and perhaps you should continue to do so.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. And then I have one more question, sir, but I'll divert to the next round.
Thank you. Council Vice President Middleton?
Just two quick questions. The first one is kind of for clarification. So ADA is, you're saying the, the funding is for, from ARPA, and infrastructure, infrastructure, the funding is from grants. Is that correct?
I think, Christian, you want to answer?
The Department of Transportation's capital budget has a wide variety of funding sources this year. They have a normal federal formula allocation, local funds, highway user revenue is is the primary local fund source, and then we recommend. And then we recommended supplementing that with some ARPA dollars. So the infrastructure funds that we were talking about earlier are through the bipartisan infrastructure bill specifically.
Okay, because I know there are areas off, and I'll just quickly reference my district with the 17 acres that's being developed, and I know that it's going to have to be considered for some massive infrastructure renovation underneath because it's, you know, it's still very old piping and so on. So, and then also the ADA requirements. So it's kind of a mix, just giving that example. And because we have so many economic development projects across the city, it's, you know, that's some more deep consideration. We don't want to wait until, you know, the actual project begins. There should be some pre-plan, pre-planning way in advance, and I don't know if that's taking place.
Yeah, so to be, to be clear, a lot of these problems originated with the drastic cut in highway user revenue 15 years ago, almost. But the way, the way we did it, for example, the first phase of Park Heights Major Redevelopment Area, that first phase has been awarded to a developer, and the developer will put in the infrastructure, or that design is already done. So that made it work for ARPA dollars. Phase two has not been awarded, so we don't know really what we're building yet. So both with Park Heights, Chum, and Uplands, where we had a first phase in play, like already awarded, we could use recovery funds for that. But we're going to be back in the same situation with the second phase unless our HUR revenue is restored to what it used to be.
And if I can just, sorry. Not within the Department of Transportation's budget, but within the Department of Housing and Community Development, we do have funds programmed for Park Heights Public Infrastructure. So there's a total of over $12 million programmed over the next six years, with 683,000 of that in fiscal year '24 to get started with kind of the concept and design. So we are, we are looking ahead. We do need to make sure that we have the funding available to follow through on that, but we are, we are thinking about that with our partners in HCD.
Thank you for that. And then my second question, historic preservation. So, and this, I guess, kind of piggyback on what our president was talking about, you know, investment and how really around the city, there's a lot of economic development, good things that are really happening. But we do have some bad characters that are just, are not respecting our historic preservation areas. And it's become problems in areas like Ashburton and Callaway Garrison, I could go down the We need to hire more inspectors some way. I don't know if that comes through you as well as to partner with code enforcement, but it's really, you know, it's getting worse.
Good point. So you are totally correct. In years past, CHAP did have a dedicated inspector, and it no longer does. And it's a pretty esoteric field compared to the building code. So we rely on HCD's inspectors to do that. We have, we have talked in-house about budget enhancement to provide an inspector specifically for CHAP or sort of untypical situations like forest conservation, planned unit development, none of them have that inspection capacity. And as you know, the inspectors are down staff overall on top of it. So your point is well taken, we're aware of it. I hope we are able to do something in the coming year to make it a little bit better.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, could you make note that, you know, we want to make sure we consider this historic preservation and the need for an inspector or inspectors? I don't know the number, we can work on that, but it's, we want to make sure that that's included in the help that we need with to solving this problem for these bad actors of developers that are, just think they can come into historic preservation areas and build what they want. It's really become a problem, and we need to flag that.
Absolutely, and I would say we should definitely raise that during the DHCD hearing as well as planning. We'll have CHAP with us for the latter half of that. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Hello? Testing.
Great.
Just moving around this way. Thank you. On the actual budget outline, Project 520-070 is the Hillen Road, 35th and Hillen. Of course, I was looking at 35th and Hillen. There is no address, 1741 East 34th Street. It should be 35th Street. I don't know if that makes a difference, but it should.
Thank you, we'll make the note.
Thanks. And then also, I had a question about, we, you outlined, and maybe this is for finance too, you outlined the fact that we have a lot more need than we have money. So we need to, we should start planning for how we get more money. And I know we've got some, had some conversations about increasing the bonding capacity, those kinds of things. Are there any other things that you're thinking about? Because this, I mean, I just looked at the GHCD piece. We've been saying we need $3 billion, and we don't have it. So what are the, what are the opportunities for us that we should be looking for as we look at this budget, but also moving forward?
Yeah, so a couple things on that. So first off, we do every five years do a debt capacity study, and that's actually underway now. We're due for one this year in fiscal '24. I mean, that, that study looks at our, you know, our metrics versus other jurisdictions to see what is reasonable in terms of how much are we borrowing and how much debt service we have as a comparison to our overall budget or compared to our assessable base. And those metrics are helpful, but what I've said before here is, it all comes down to what you can afford. And, you know, we are, you know, we have been very cautious about ever saying we should raise money through new taxes because we already have a high, you know, highest tax rates in the state, so we don't think that's a reasonable option. The best approach, you know, we go and we look at, you know, what are affordable, what we can afford in the future, and really, ever since this Kerwin thing has been hanging over us and given the additional costs we face this year, we just haven't felt comfortable increasing our borrowing capacity. So we've been at 80, where we've, you know, mapped that out over a 10-year period in our financial plan and see what we can afford. But given the schools' cost, even before what we faced this year, we just didn't feel comfortable bumping that capacity up, given that it layers on additional debt service over time. So, and I think most critical is we've got to fix that issue, which we've talked about here. We have, you know, we got hit with an unexpected increase this year that I think is fixable. Until we can get that corrected, that's the biggest portion of our fixed costs. It just, we just don't have the capacity to just raise the borrowing limit and just go higher because ultimately that ends up being city costs in the general fund down the road. So, you know, again, new revenue sources, very hesitant to do that given, you know, where we are in taxes compared to others. And then we, you know, we would be more aggressive about raising that limit if we had a better sense of our long-term financial projection.
Yeah, I think we just need to continue to have those discussions because we believe strongly in fully funding our schools. We have to. We're also one of the jurisdictions that provides lowest amount to the schools, so, and that makes a difference in our capacity to even ask for money from the state. So I think we need to kind of figure that.
I don't agree with that at all about that we do less. That's a whole nother issue that we can discuss after, but I think that's a real, it's a myth. We're doing a lot for schools in terms of our operating contribution. We're doing, the 21st Century Schools Program, remember, we're making a contribution to that, and we're locked in for that amount for, you know, an additional 20-plus years, which did a lot for the schools.
Yeah.
I think what we're seeing now is we know there's a lot of schools' needs, but there's also a lot of just kind of general infrastructure needs.
For sure. I mean, I, we just need money, period.
Well, but I'm telling you, those are the places, either raise taxes, which we're not comfortable doing.
Which we're not going to do.
Or we find, you know, reductions in areas where we think we're either, you know, getting a raw deal from the state or, you know, other areas where we don't think our particular, you know, the money's not being used to its best purpose. So that's really our options at this point. And again, I think the best option right now is trying to fix, you know, what we think was a, was an unfortunate error in the formula that really hit us badly this year.
Right, and so the other piece of that, though, is obviously investment in increasing our tax base, which is addressing vacant properties, which I've said before. And then my last, next question is, the capital budget, there's a project 557-259, it's Greenmount Avenue. I am just going to flip my lid on this one, okay? It is a water main to go in, in the same exact place we just replaced water main from 29th Street, on Greenmount Avenue, from 29th Street up to Cold Spring Lane. And we just did a nice, beautiful, amazing streetscaping with federal funds. And my understanding from the various emails is that this is going to start in 2027. This is insanity, okay? This is crazy.
Councilwoman, I think, I think this is a question that's probably better geared for DPW.
I will be asking it of DPW as well. But I just wanted to get a sense from capital budget, like, what's going on here that we're repeating ourselves?
I mean, points well taken. We've asked DPW to look at other alignments. We haven't gotten a response to that. I don't, Kristen, do you have anything else to add?
Yep, talking to them, it looks like there is work in that general area, but it may not be along York Road necessarily. So they need to do design to see exactly which water mains they need to touch. They, they responded that they are looking at alternative approaches right now. So we'll continue to stay on top of that and look at where those designs take them.
We're not digging up Greenmount Avenue again. I'm just telling you right now, for years, because the businesses were impacted. So I'm hopeful that we can work together on that. Thanks, Mr. Chair, I'll wait till the next round for my other-
Thank you. Councilwoman McCray, then Dorsey, and then Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one question. It's regarding 6700 Pulaski Highway. I just want to know what investments are we making, and this is regarding workplace safety, worker safety. What investments, if any, are we making for our tow yard?
This is the tow yard?
6700 Pulaski Highway.
Kristen can answer specifically your question about investments, but I would point out that that tow yard is in the flood plain and floodway, partially even in the floodway. So we have been working with DOT to explore any alternative options. I think there are two. One is to move the yard. It's 19 acres, very large facility, very hard to move. They might have to change some of their operating procedures to expedite getting rid of these vehicles quicker. The other option is to build, build up, build it out of the flood plain. As far as I know, we don't have any cost estimates for that. So whatever, I know, I know there are OSHA issues there now.
Right.
So those are the immediate issues, but even once those are resolved, we have longer-term issues.
Yeah, we have not recommended funding the improvements to that towing facility at 600, 6700 Pulaski in this year's capital budget. We recommend DOT work with, with us and with the rest of the city to look at alternatives to investments because of the environmental concerns at that site.
So I guess my concern right now is that there are workers there, and we know that there are long-term health impacts to what they're experiencing right now. Can HUR funds, can those revenue, can HUR revenue be utilized in this case for any type of improvements to that tow yard?
I don't know, I don't know exactly. I don't want to say one way or the other. I would think they would be, but I don't know that for sure.
Okay, for the new process, is that something that we can put in as a committee request?
Yeah, we have. How a user fund speed used for the supplement of less.
Overall, how are we prioritizing worker safety within our capital budget?
I think we may need more information about what the worker safety issues are and whether they would be operating or capital. So we worked with DPW for some of their facilities, and there were worker safety issues for the buildings, where the buildings needed to be renovated, and we were able to fund some of those in recent years. This building, from a capital point of view, probably needs to be relocated, and so that's kind of the lens that we were looking at and thinking that any immediate safety issues maybe could be addressed through operating. But we need to understand the scope of them and understand whether they really are operating issues or capital. So we can work with the Department of Transportation, if you want to be interested, and have those further conversations.
Do we have a timeline for, because this, and I'm bringing this up because this was a discussion from the previous fiscal year. So do we have a timeline on what it looks like to possibly relocate this tow yard or address these issues?
I'm not familiar with the tow yard issue, I will say.
You talked, you talked about it last year.
Last year, we had, I believe, massive OSHA violations in the Bureau of Solid Waste. And working with finance, when we did have a surplus, there was a substantial commitment made to the Bureau of Solid Waste to remedy their OSHA violations. Now, they don't have access to highway user revenue. So if it's an eligible use, one might expect the Department of Transportation to use that source to address those violations.
Thank you both for your responses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Similar to Councilmember Ramos' questions or concern rather about what I can only regard as kind of the most perennially observed problem here in how we operate as a government that every person in every neighborhood I know complains about, that we dig up a street and then the next year, we're digging up that same street again, or two years later. Like, this is like the most abysmal waste of taxpayer resources that we face on the most continuous basis as a city. Like, I just, to her point, like, there has to be a way that in the capital budget process, the planning department is stewarding these agencies to do better than we have done for decades. This is where the money approval is passing through, without which they can't do this. It is being allowed to happen through the capital process. This can't go on. At the same time, on a similar note, I'd like to understand what is happening through planning staff preparation, work with agencies, and the CIP hearing process to ensure that we're not just not wasting dollars, doing work repeatedly- we're not just not wasting dollars, doing work repetitively, but making greatest use of funds by aligning agencies' goals, not just in the short term, but in the long term, between agencies, and then also requiring that agencies are doing what they need to do within their agency to meet certain mandates. And I will give two examples that have been on my mind for a long time and I've spoken about at length, and done a lot of work to try to steward these agencies myself, but seemingly, failingly, because they're not doing it. One is that we have a requirement to meet MS4 goals. Every year, through DPW, they have to spend money to do certain types of work. And almost invariably, the way that that money is spent is to put in bio-retention areas in the middle of parks where no one asked for it, and it serves no further benefit except for to just get credits for MS4. And so, we're just throwing money into getting the credits however we can, without any regard for how we could be doing that differently in a way that helps to meet other goals, the most obvious of which is we have crashes and we, I mean, we're going to spend, we're going to incur $2.5 million in damages to city-owned property this year from crash, from vehicles crashing into city-owned property. We're going to, we're going to incur $2.5 million in damages to streetlights alone. And we could be reducing that number and improving neighborhood safety on streets if we were simply right sizing those streets and spending the money to take away excess road space in order to convert it into permeable surface area and ecologically beneficial use of land, as opposed to just more asphalt, is something that could align DPW's goal to acquire MS4 credits and DOT's goal of, of making streets safer and the Finance Department's goal of, and the, the Planning Department's goal of stewarding our finances in a responsible manner. And I can't for the life of me, single-handedly steward these agencies, but I know that the money to do all of these things has to come through the Planning Department and through the, rather, through the capital process. So, I want to know how planning is going to become a better steward in, in making these, these goals align to one another, and similarly, even within agencies, within a single agency. Because right now, I have an outstanding request, at least two months old, to the Department of Transportation, just to know what tech-contracted street resurfacing will happen this year. We are well, well, well into the repaving season, and DOT can't seem to tell me what resurfacing projects they are endeavoring into this year under contract. The specific projects, not just the, not the maintenance division projects, but the ones funded through HUR dollars, through capital grants, through tech contracting, that absolutely have to go through the CIP process. And the important thing is that every single one of those projects, anything that rises to the level that it would come through a tech contract, crosses the threshold where those streets must be changed. They cannot stay the same. The complete streets law requires that those streets be changed to improve their safety and multimodal accessibility. And yet, there's no way that we can do that at this scale if they aren't able to tell us earlier in the process what those streets are and that they have contracted or allocated internal resources to come up with the designs to make those changes. And I don't see anybody but me trying to get them to tell us in a more timely fashion where they plan to do any work or what those planned changes will be. How is this going to be achieved through the CIP process?
I bring up a good point, Councilman, but the, the specific response, the, the street resurfacings are in a bulk account, unfortunately. They're not individual accounts. Only the larger street projects are in individual accounts. So, we don't know them either. In fact, you probably find out earlier than we do about the specific resurfacing projects. To the MS4 issue, I, I think that's an interesting point you make. I know when we bring up similar questions, the answers seem to always be driven by the qualitative nature of the MS4 permit and what is regarded as a high-quality project versus a low quality from a water treatment standpoint. But I don't know if Sarah, or Kristen, or John have anything else to add?
I guess, look, here, I mean, for basic response to a basic response, is that I understand that you probably know what streets are going to get resurfaced after we learn, right? What I'm asking is, how can, in the CIP process, that change? Because it shouldn't be happening, we shouldn't be learning at the time when either of us is learning. By the time I'm learning, we are six to eight months too late at least. And that's when, that's six to, six to eight months is when the CIP process is at its height. And so, that's, that's when we should be learning, in the process of approving that bulk account. What's in that bulk account? What's in that bulk contract? And, as I said on the other point, it's not just MS4. It's, it is responsible stewardship of resources in general. It is the elimination of, of unnecessary costs like making streets safer. It's not just MS4. It's making streets safer so that we're not spending millions of dollars to go and pick up knocked-down streetlights and put up new ones. Literally, millions of dollars every single year, just for things that are preventable and could be better prevented if we aligned these resources, when we have the opportunity to hold these agencies to account, to align their efforts to one another.
All right. To directly answer your question, I will talk, and also, Councilwoman Ramos' question about Greenmount Avenue, I'll talk to the Director of the Department of Transportation, specifically of how we can better align issues that they're working on, and specifically on the street resurfacings.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just to piggyback on Councilman Dorsey's statement, we had a very similar experience recently on Edmonton Avenue where resurfacing, I believe DOT may have been doing work initially and dug up the street, find infrastructure needs to happen. Literally, within a few weeks of it being resurfaced, BGE is out there doing gas line replacement. We've, and this is not necessarily unique to that street, but just noting that the coordination between, between sort of non-city agencies is also pretty problematic. And I would add that, that context, even in the MS4 conversation as well, as you all are aware, BGE's been doing the gas line work in Gwynsbowls Linkin Park and will be going across the city. And I've, I've had what I've described as construction fatigue with some of my constituents who are just tired of the banging, tired of the digging, tired of all of it. And it's my understanding that there's another proposal to do both additional MS4 work and BGE work in the same footprint in the coming years. And, you know, so I've been pleading with all, anyone who will listen to say, look, I, I understand that, like, sometimes these projects are sequential and it makes sense to just, like, keep going in the same direction you're going geographically, but for the residents, that can just be exhausting to continuously, for one, having to try and better understand, like, well, who's doing the work this time? Is it DPW? Is it BGE? But more importantly, it's just, it's, it's a lot for people to, to continue to deal with year, year over year in multi-year projects. And so, just trying to figure out, like, where the gaps in communication can be or are, where, you know, one, one thing after the other is happening and there doesn't seem to be sort of a concerted effort to think, you know, about the constituents themselves who are, like, living through perpetual construction and traffic redirection and missing parking and just the debris and the storage. Like, it's just, it's a lot for people.
I understand. I, I know that we get blamed, the city gets blamed a lot for work that BGE is doing. I'm a little reluctant to commit to fixing that problem, but I'll, I'll bring it up with the DOT Director.
Oh, I'm going to, I'm going to, this is a question that we've copy-pasted into multiple sections on my spreadsheet here. But just, I, I raise it here because you all are sort of like the entity that sort of flows between agencies, and so, that's why, why I wanted to throw it out here. Secondly, on sort of a different note, the conversation of funding for projects, I've heard that a lot of larger jurisdictions have created offices that focus solely on finding grants for city agencies, city offices. Has there been conversation that you are aware of, Director, around, or either Director, around sort of finding grant funds, seeking grant funds, just being incredibly proactive at finding non-raising taxes ways to, to fund ideas and fund projects? And I, and I'm throwing this out there because I, I know that there was one instance in which my staff found state funds that we kicked over to DPW. And at the, at the time, I'm not saying that they wouldn't have caught on or been made aware of it, but at the time, they weren't. And sort of like, all right, we'll look into chasing this down. And it, so I wasn't sure, had there been conversations that sort of centralized that, that role to figure out, like, where, where are other pots of money that agencies can generally be looking at and applying for?
That's a great question. My conversations with the former CAO, he thought perhaps, at that point, it didn't exist, the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure could take that role. I will say in a couple, for example, the, the Department of Transportation created their own planning division years ago, but they don't have the community outreach capacity we have. So, for example, on the, on the so-called Highway to Nowhere, we partnered, that agency coordinated the application, the Department, our Department of Transportation coordinated the application with, with, for example, MDOT and MTA, where we did a lot of the community outreach and coordination work. So, what I, I think what I'm trying to say is, on transportation-related issues, they, they would be the lead. We, I think we can and are the lead on the, in the Office of Sustainability. We look, we look very closely at that. We track it. We applied for a number of, of different opportunities. And to Councilwoman Porter's earlier question, we work, the Sustainability Office works closely with the Bureau of Solid Waste on that universe of opportunities. So, three answers. Overall, maybe infrastructure, transportation, we work with DOT, and solid waste, we work with them. And other, we have a FEMA grant application in now for our resiliency hubs, for example. Office of Sustainability has historically been very entrepreneurial, as has food policy, food policy was actually created by Sustainability, and now it's doing similar types of, of grant applications for their work.
Got it. My, my last question, Mr. Chair, is for Director Sinema. I would say generally, do you, what is your perspective on agencies seeking out funds proactively? Do you think we can do a better job? What are some of the barriers that you think are, that prevent agencies from being more proactive? Obviously, your, your office sort of oversees, like, the need that we, the needs that we have and where we're going to find the funds. Do you, do you think we could do better? Do you think making an office makes sense? Like, just what are your perspective on that?
Yeah. So, I do think we can do better. Like I said earlier, you know, we're, our hands are tied in a lot of ways. We've got high taxes. We've got a lot of fixed costs, so we, you know, we need to find creative ways to, to bring in more resources. I do think agencies, the restriction is more on just how hard it is just to do their daily job, that oftentimes, they're not able to allocate staff to kind of be doing that, kind of forward-thinking, looking for opportunities. So, I, I, you know, echo what Chris had said earlier. I do think having an office specifically that just does that and seeks that out and helps to coordinate is the right approach, because the decentralized approach of kind of hoping that each agency is looking on their own kind of really hasn't worked that way. It's worked in some cases. Some agencies have done well at times and have found things, but other times, you know, we've missed some things. So, I think having a centralized unit that can look for that, understand it, and then kind of direct those opportunities and make sure that they're factored into our budget discussions is, is the right way to go. So, I think a, a central office is, even if we have to spend a little bit of general funds, which we are with the MOID office, I think that's probably the best approach.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before we get into the second round of questions, Director, I think it'd be very helpful if you could join us this afternoon at 4:30 PM. We have the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development joining the City Administrator. So, I think if you could just be present for that conversation, I think most of those questions will be directed to the CAO and the Director of MOID, not to be confused with Moed. Couple other housekeeping items. Anyone here has phones on, please turn them silent or vibrate. And for folks that are testifying, please make sure your, your red light is on. We're going to circle back through with a reminder that we have Visit Baltimore at 11:00 AM sharp. It is currently 10:27 AM. So, council members, please keep your questions as brief as possible, and agency officials, please be as succinct as possible with your responses. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bob, I think from the book, we have a backlog of about $9 billion in deferred maintenance. Is that about right, from your?
Sounds about right.
Yeah, that sounds about right. And, and I think also, I guess we're losing ground, meaning over the past four years, we've moved in the wrong direction. Is that about right as well, right?
Yes, we are, we are losing ground.
We are losing ground.
Thank you. And I think when we talk about some of the things that we've heard, I think I've heard it from Manon Vice President, I've heard it from Councilwoman Ramos, I've heard it from Councilman Burnett, I've heard it from Councilman Dorsey, specific to transportation. I think the transportation deferred maintenance is about $1.3 billion, of which, I think I heard you say in your presentation that it would really take us like $158 million per year to kind of get ahead of that and get comfortable grounding. Is that right?
That's correct. The Department of Transportation's done a good job of, of quantifying their needs.
Yeah.
And I would point out that the formula years ago coincided with that calculation. So, somebody did good work years ago to match up.
To at least let us know what the story is going to be, right? I, I guess I'm going down this path of, I wanted to conflate two discussions that we've had today and that we've talked about in the past, but really, like, increasing, like, geo-bonding capacity and, like, how do we do that? Like, how does it feel? I know it's like the five-year evaluation. I think you, you call it the debt capacity study that we should expect, I guess, later this year. Knowing that this is a problem, knowing that we're moving in the wrong direction, and the concern that I have, and I know that many other council members probably also have, is when we lose revenue opportunities. One of the biggest revenue opportunities, which is really interesting, that this council has seen over the past year, was the whole BGE conduit issue. You know, ultimately, you know, the city was going to receive $30 million plus, whatever, in perpetuity, as long as BGE was, I guess, accessing our conduit system. And I guess the question for you, Bob, is, could that have been leveraged in a geo-bond? Could that have been leveraged in a bond to, to, to take out and really try to get ahead some of this deferred maintenance associated with transportation?
Well, I don't think so, because with the, with the conduit, because that's separate from the, the rest of the city's infrastructure, the money that goes into the conduit system has to be spent on the conduit system, so the users of that are not going to contribute money for the city to use for whatever they want. So, you know, that, that discussion, I think, is kind of separate from our kind of general city infrastructure, because the, the dollars that went into that program go to the conduit infrastructure, not kind of the other general infrastructure of the city. Could we, is, could we have done a borrowing approach versus pay-go for conduit itself? Yes, that's, that could have been a possibility.
Yeah, we've talked about that before, but just. Yeah, we've talked about that before, but just specific to this. So say we're getting like $30 million in from BG&E in perpetuity, right? You're with me, right?
Yep.
Um, that $30 million-
Could leverage-
Equates to a very large bond that we could potentially take in, right?
Yeah.
So, so the idea is not that we're not spending $30 million on the conduit system.
Right.
The idea is we're leveraging money that we're receiving in to go after, uh, and grow our capacity from a bonding perspective, to really go after and aggressively do some of these infrastructure jobs, particularly the ones that we're talking about as it relates to transportation.
Right. And, and, right. And I think on the, so, separate from the conduit for a second, yes, we could do, the, the city could do one large, you know, campaign, you know, called a billion dollars, similar with the 21st Century Schools program was exactly what you're saying.
Correct.
There are a bunch up front, and then we locked in, um, we had to lock in, you know, debt service payments for a long period of time. That, we have talked about that. And honestly, before we got hit with this, you know, kind of surprise on the schools this year, we were considering, you know, are we at a point that we have enough like flexibility that we can do a big geo-bond authoring outside of even our normal 80 million a year, and then figure out, okay, we just have to set aside 10 million, 15 million, whatever it would be, for debt service to pay for that. We, we had, I, I mean, I mean this honestly, we had reached a point where we were talking about that, and it just got all thrown out the window in January and February when we had this, um, you know, the surprise on the, on the school formulas that was not there. So we have talked about it. The other approach is that you just inch up the geo-bond authority each year, like you go from 80 to 90 or 80 for, to 100. Um, that also though, all, each of those, each of those approaches does add debt service to your budget in the long term. And again, it's the comfort level of, will you be able to afford that in the out years? And I think kind of pre-January, February, we were at a point where we were like, maybe we can do this. And now I just don't feel comfortable unless we get this, you know, either the formula fixed or some other revenue source or some other, um, you know, something else that kind of falls in the city's favor financially.
But if that was the true mentality, I guess the question goes back to, and I don't want to divorce the conduit discussion away from this discussion, because I think it's directly related to it. Why give up that $30 million in perpetuity that could have been leveraged to go after increasing the geo-bond capacity? I mean, I think that that's the financial, uh, you know, I, I know, I know it was, it was definitely a financial decision on the city's part. I guess from a financial perspective, how does that put us in a better light?
Well, I, I would say there's, there's also an operational consideration that if you do a big, big massive borrowing upfront, you have to be prepared to do that work. And, you know, frankly, we've had trouble keeping up on just capital projects, even just borrowing 80 million per year out of geo-bonds. So like, if you did like a massive program, like what was done on 21st Century Schools, you've got to be prepared to kind of like design, build, and get help to do that. So it's not just a financial, I mean, I, I think more about the financial component of like, where does the debt service layer in, and how does that affect our, our long-term financial outlook? But it's also the ability to actually execute on those projects, which is a little bit more complicated. Um, and so I, I think on that piece of it, I, I, I think I'd have to kind of step back and kind of think about if we'd be able to do that. My instinct is that we probably don't have the capacity right now to do like a massive capital inflow unless we had either, you know, outside support or an office like MOID to kind of like, you know, shepherd the projects and make sure they stay on, on track. So it's not just the financial component, there was also some considerations of can we do it within our existing agency capacity?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think everyone in the chamber would agree that we would want the money spent effectively and efficiently. So, um, my question wasn't going down the path of just like haphazardly spending it, nor taking out the full capacity in year one.
Right, yeah, right.
I guess the real, uh, point of the question, the underlying meaning of the question, if the real mentality of the administration was to increase bonding capacity, you know, why are we, um, for opportunities where we have real revenue, giving revenue, well, losing those opportunities of revenue. One being, um, you know, the conduit issue, another, another one being the CFG Arena parking lot, another one being the CFG, uh, Arena, uh, corporate office space, uh, you know, where I guess in that it's $1 over the next 30 years. So these are all opportunities, uh, where it's real revenue that the city can realize. The expectation is the Central Business District will continue to grow, will hopefully continue to flourish. Uh, and you know, that office space is going to be worth what, much more than $1 over the course of the entire 30 years. So I guess the question is just literally taking a step back. And when we're dealing with infrastructure issues that have been raised by Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Burnett, Councilwoman Ramos, Vice Chair, Vice President Middleton, it's like we can't continue to make those decisions and at the same time come to budget and say, hey, we can't raise our, our, our bonding capacity because of we having these revenue issues. And only thing I keep hearing from is because of education. Now, the reality is, we have to fully fund education. The reality is, how, you know, the misnomer is that we're not, we haven't, in comparison, we're not doing what other places are doing. We are, but are we doing enough is, is a completely different argument. And I think that, um, as it relates to whatever the funding formula changes, the city still has to have teeth in the game in a way that we haven't had through education. And that cannot be the only, uh, recourse, um, or justification as to why we aren't doing these things. Particularly in the same frame of giving revenue away or losing out in revenue opportunities. And thinking about the BG&E conduit issue where we have $30 million in perpetuity that could directly go to some of these infrastructure projects that we're talking about, and ensuring that we're properly preparing ourselves to appropriately spend the money effectively and efficiently, is I think the discussion that we should really be having.
Uh, so, there's a lot there. Let me try to hit, hit all of them. So, um, yes, I, I think for the, the point about education versus infrastructure, that happens to be the issue now that's central. So that's, that's, um, just one thing that hit us this year, but that's true of any part of the budget. If we could free up 5 million, 10 million, 15 million, you can do the math on what that can leverage in terms of additional borrowing. So I think that's true of, I mean, the schools issue was a surprise this year, so that's why it was kind of front and center, but that's true of anything else in the budget in terms of, are there things that we can take out of the operating budget and free that up so that we have money to support debt service if we were to raise the, the geo-bond limit? Um, on the, on the point on the parking garages and the economic development, I think that's a fair point. I mean, we've had this conversation-
Yeah, we've talked about this, yeah.
I think we have to be, I, I still don't think we're being, I, I think we're making improvements, but I think we have to be really choiceful on some of those, you know, tax incentives and economic development incentives in terms of tax credits or pilots and things of that sort. I, we do try to consider those things very carefully to make sure that there is some kind of long-term benefit when we offer, um, some kind of incentive like that. But, you know, that's something obviously we're looking at very closely, uh, and are continuing to look at through the, you know, the, the group that's going to be formed to, to analyze those. Um, I still think on the last point, on the conduits, I think it is separate because the amount that's being contributed that we're using as pay-go, that's about enough for them, or what BG is keeping now to do the infrastructure. That's like the work that they're doing on kind of an annual basis to kind of continue to keep the, the program in good shape. So I don't think there's, um, I don't think there's as much of a reason to do some kind of big borrowing on the conduit side to get like a massive upfront investment.
You, you wouldn't have to do it that way. I, I guess you, you, we keep, and I want to make this very clear. So we can find $30 million in capital improvement in our budget to pay for what we need to pay for to go after the bonding. The idea is, once you lose that $30 million, you can't replace that anywhere. So BG&E was paying us $30 million in perpetuity. As long as we needed power, they were going to have to pay us $30 million per year to utilize our conduit system, right?
Right.
In the same breath, while we're going after trying to identify ideas of increasing bonding capacity to Councilwoman Odette Ramos's question and other questions, we have to find and utilize what revenue can we go to go after bonding. With that $30 million, knowing that it's coming in every single year, leveraging that in a way for a bond while still spending $30 million, which is our responsibility to BG&E, was an option that I think we've talked about. Unfortunately, I think it wasn't explored in depth or in, in detail. Um, I, I guess this idea of, you know, the $80 million a year is great, um, but we're going to consistently move in the wrong direction of the deferred maintenance and lose ground on deferred maintenance if we don't do something drastic. Uh, and, you know, we sit in these budget hearings year after year and we talk about it, uh, but I have not seen a plan to try to address it in a way that's at least just throwing a pebble, uh, uh, in a body of water and at least starting to create some ripples to kind of go after something that is, that, that, that's pretty scary when we talk about the trajectory of it over the next 10, 20, 30 years.
Yeah, I, I understood. I, I mean, I, I agree with you completely. It's the, one of the few things that I lose sleep over is like, we're really going down the wrong path.
We all should.
And, um, you know, I, I do think that going forward, you know, this year was a kind of an odd year because we kind of got sidetracked in the middle of the planning process, but I, I do think there's a strong case to be made that going forward, that you, you, you take a whole budget planning cycle and say, let's figure out a way to kind of, you know, right-size our operating budget to the point that we can leverage additional dollars and set it aside for debt service so that we can raise the, the borrowing capacity so we can make more of a debt. I think that, that could be, um, you know, that could be the whole theme of a budget planning process one year. Um, you know, last couple of years, we've had that curve in, we were waiting to see how that was going to shake out. Then we had the additional, you know, issue this year. We had COVID that we were dealing with, where we weren't in a position to be adding, you know, things to the budget. So as all those things have kind of cycled out, I think we were getting to a point of stability where it's like, okay, now we can start to plan longer about what do we do about this infrastructure problem. And I, I hope that we can still, that we can still do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Porter, then Vice President Middleton. As a reminder, we have about 19 minutes left before Visit Baltimore. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'll forego my question for the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, VP Middleton.
Thank you. Um, I'm trying to figure out how to phrase this, but first I want to thank you for, um, your office for really taking time and updating, um, presidents of community associations and, you know, all that information. Just very, very important. Um, but I guess my question is, you know how we're going through, um, redistricting of police, um, getting ready to have, um, our talks with, uh, redistricting with council and so on? Um, and then we have funding and grants that come to our neighborhoods. And, uh, through many, many past mayors, when a mayor comes in, they start with new initiatives, block captains, so on with communities. And, uh, I'm sure this problem is happening around the entire city where there might be a street that no one really claimed, and then someone just takes it and claims it and adds it to their neighborhood, and really it belonged to another neighborhood. So, you know, that causes a problem, um, especially when, uh, funding like home repairs and, and things like that. So is your office taking a stance on boundaries of these associations? Because I'm finding, you know, a, a council person can't really get involved in that situation. And as the Planning Department, we need to have set guidelines and, and boundaries for, you know, these associations to operate in a calm, peaceful manner.
Yeah, thank you for that question, because it's an important one and something we think about. Um, so what we, what we, um, have not done is become like the police of community associations. Um, and the reason is, that goes down the line, that goes down the road of like completely legalistic system like Washington or New York, where you have a board of elections overseeing, you know, really competitive, competitive races. But we have substantially revised our policies, and you can see that, I think we worked with some of your staff in the Community Association Directory, where we began asking very specific questions about, um, the makeup of your board, the makeup of your committee structure. Uh, how do you communicate with your neighborhood? Do you have social media? Do you have a newsletter? Do you have an email list? Um, we're really trying to subtly, because we don't require it, introduce some accountability into the Community Association Director. We also now, um, it used to be once you signed in, you were there forever. Um, and we had almost 1,000, um, names in there, but you have to sign up every year. If you want your association to be in the directory, then you have to renew it every year. And when you renew it, you're asked as to who your officers are, when your elections are, what your, um, communication strategy is and such like that. We introduced that just before COVID, so I think it's been a little rocky in terms of rollout. Some groups don't know about it yet, so we're encouraging you to spread the word that it has to be renewed annually. And the idea is that you all, um, and us, we can read between the lines. And if somebody doesn't have a board, doesn't have regular elections, you know, doesn't have a communication strategy that tells you volumes about what kind of organization they are.
Um, if they're not in compliance, do you take over or who, you know, what's the process of making sure?
We don't, but, um, but again, they would have to affirmatively re-enroll themselves every 12 months, or they get, or they get dropped from the, from the directory. So that's how we're doing that.
So it's really up to the community getting together?
It's a, it is a self-policing model.
Okay.
But we've introduced as much more accountability as we think we can in this situation, and to give you all and our community planners as much information as possible.
I just want to quickly add that our neighborhood plan policy also tries to get at some of your concerns about one neighborhood association unilaterally making a vision plan or something for a geography, you know, that's bigger. And so that requires, um, if someone's trying to initiate a neighborhood, um, plan, they have to talk to their, um, planning person in community planning, you know, their district planner, and then they also have to show that they've communicated with all stakeholders, even if there's overlapping boundaries in that geography, so that one neighborhood association X can't speak and cut out the voice of neighborhood association Y. So I just wanted to lift that up as a, another, um, um, situation that I, I'm sure you've confronted or probably have to deal with, where there's at least this backstop that someone can't erase someone else's voice from that process.
So there is a written policy?
Oh, yeah, there is written for, if you're trying to initiate a neighborhood plan that you would like to present to Planning Commission to be, um, accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam VP. Councilman Stokes?
Uh, Director, um, Rob, I think we had this conversation about two years ago about what, uh, the Vice Chair was talking about, communities just walking into someone's boundaries. And I know, um, it's kind of difficult. My question is, when you, whatever your policy is requiring, that they have to have an active board, they have to have an election, how do you monitor that? Because what happens, it's easy to write the policy. I know a community association, they ain't never had an election, but they still, uh, listed in the Planning Department. So I don't know how you monitor your own policy when you give it to people and they're not having elections. And what the Vice President just talked about, people just taking over communities, going into somebody's boundaries. I know you cannot kind of get in that fight, but how do you enforce your own policy if nobody's monitoring some community associations that President, been the President for 100 years and ain't never had an election?
Great question. Um, so we, two answers. We beefed up the directory to ask for this information. We never asked for it before. And Assistant Director Smith, um, talked about the community planning process, having a requirement for outreach and communication around that for a community-initiated, um, plan. But the, the final answer to your question is that, um, this department, um, has one of the most robust community planning divisions in the country. And I meet with other large city, um, planning directors, and we've actually added to, to community planners to that group. So at the end of the day, we, those community planners are the eyes and ears of the department on the ground, in the neighborhoods, e- even with individuals. And, and they keep us honest. When, when something goes to the Planning Commission, the, the community planners know that they can say anything they want to say to the Director of Planning or any of our team here. Um, we really rely on the community planners to keep us in touch with, with what's, um, going on in, in the neighborhoods of Baltimore.
So my final question is, the community planners, are they sharing their policy with community associations? Because I know how hard they work, but I have never seen that happen. Two is, um, I guess, yeah, the question is, I've never seen them issue or distribute the new policy about what we're actually talking about now. I'd never, I've been in community meetings with planners, were there, and that issue never came from the planner, or the planner didn't, uh, distribute the information about what we talked about now.
So Councilman, if you're already in the system, you were notified via the email you had on file as being connected, you know, to the leadership of your association. So that was the primary way that they were communicated with. And to your point, um, maybe that email's no- no longer manned, or the person who once set it up is no longer involved. So this is definitely going to be a process where we're kind of weeding out things that are not maybe as robust, or maybe that information's no longer accurate. I don't want to say all misinformation in there is necessarily, you know, from a negative space. People have transitioned even, you know what I mean, that we're in leadership and some, you know, from health issues and different things like that, where maybe they just haven't been able to administer or transition on some of that information. But I think that before, it was completely scouts' honor, completely, and we weren't really asking some of those questions. So now, having to get those responses, it helps us to tease out an organization that may be completely inactive even at a certain point.
So my last question is, how do you, like, in my district, you got three community associations in the same boundaries, okay? All of them recognized by the planning department. How do you deal with three organizations, the same boundaries in the organizations? I mean, if you got three, how do you prioritize which one is, you can't really say the community association, because they all did all the paperwork to qualify for being recognized by the planning department. So it's not just in my district, I think it's all over the city. So I don't know how you deal with that, but my other question is, I would probably mention to the planners that when they have meetings, they need to share the policy, whether they get it off an email, because a lot of people might not even read the email. So I think the planners should be presenting that to the community association, what the policy is and what the standards are in terms of planning recognizes community associations, but their boundaries that they already have.
So point well taken. I made a note. We'll do another round of outreach around the Community Association Directory and how we made those changes, because it was, COVID did interfere with that rollout. So that's a good point. And we can iterate the community planning process. But to your question about how do you deal with two groups with the same boundaries, we do allow that. There's no paperwork way to prevent that. But we rely on our staff, and I hope they communicate with you all. For example, what are the nuances of the two groups? Do they represent two different groups of people? Is one king for life and the other one really democratic? Like, those are the kinds of things we work with you all and our community planners to understand, so that one, a comment from one community association may be very different than a comment from a different one.
Thank you, but we had to pick our own fights, you know.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos, reminder, we've got about six minutes left.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to add to the discussion we were having before about the various things that we could be looking at for more revenue and just beating the drum again around, you know, looking at our tax credits, as well as looking sort of long-term relative to investments in addressing vacant and abandoned properties so that we can get the tax base. I mean, I think that we need to do all of that. I'm wondering, Mr. Chair, this might be a question for you. The, I don't know if our authority allows us to, our new authority allows us to sort of put budget language in, to sort of say, hey, we really want to dedicate, you know, finance to dedicate to people to, you know, look at just revenue generation or something like that. I don't, I don't know that we have that.
I can't answer that right now. That's without a doubt outside of the scope of this hearing. We can talk offline with council about that.
Okay. I appreciate that. And then I have other capital budget questions, but I'll refer those to the agency, the specific agencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Burnett, Dorsey, Stokes, Middleton, Porter? Excellent. Thank you all very much. Director, we'll see you again this afternoon. If you could be back by, say, 4:15 PM, that would be greatly appreciated. And feel free to bring whomever from your team you deem appropriate.
Certainly.
Thank you. We're in recess until 11:00 AM sharp.